Good evening. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Publics Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools and on cablevision channel 118, and Verizon Viros channel 24, and by filing such notice with the township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Ms. Mara?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered a private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording, and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you, Ms. Mara. Can we please rise for the pledge?
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Here.
DePrima?
Here.
Dunn? Ellis Forster?
Here.
Lent?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Singh? Solakowski?
Here.
Callie?
Here.
Quorum exists?
Thank you. We're going to have a reading of the Code of Ethics Corner Highlight of the Month, and I believe that was Mrs. DeCaro.
Vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer.
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro. Okay, may I have a motion, please, for approval of the minutes?
Lent will move it.
Reed will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Forster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our report of the student representative. Dominic?
Help change of holiday starts Monday. We are collecting spare change throughout December to purchase holiday meals for two local families. Tomorrow, we're having our President's Council during school, where all the club representatives meet up and share updates on what they're doing. Also, right after school is Asian Culture Club Rice Fest. It's a food and culture celebration. And at 6 o'clock, we have our annual Powderpuff Game. And the days following that is our Old Bridge Drama Department Out of Order Fall Comedy. And the 25th, our talent show tryouts. Adopt a Family has started. Programs in which is, and Adopt a Family is when, programs and clubs buy presents for less fortunate families who send in their Christmas list. OBHS Fights Hunger Food Drive is in effect. Toys for Tots, which Mr. Lastin does every year, where they collect toys and send them to the Marine Corps. And Pierce collecting tabs to donate to the Ronald McDonald House. And Ms. Borriello made a new casing for those tabs in the cafeteria. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to recognition. Mr. Sidedino?
Well, I'm just very pleased to have three young ladies with us today from Grissom School. We all saw them as a board and administration with their principal, Dr. Rico, and Ms. Maribel, who's the building secretary there at Grissom School. And they were involved in the, at the New Jersey School Boards Conference with a competition with, I think, over 300 schools. And it was the Steam Tank Challenge, where they came up with a problem that steam, or STEM, which also can include the arts, was able to solve a problem using their scientific know-how. So they were in this competition, and I know they did very well. And I think Dr. Hoker was going to join me at the podium, or join them at the podium, and recognize them. So I'll read into the recognition that the Board's going to celebrate them, too. And Dr. Hoker, or myself, will go on and talk more about these fantastic young ladies. So I'll move the Board of Education to recognize the following Grissom Elementary School 4th Grade students for finishing 15th out of 500 teams that competed in the Fourth Annual Steam Tank Challenge at Atlantic City, sponsored by the New Jersey School Boards Association and the US Army. Gabriella Nelson, Monica Jankuz, and Emily Godek. So can those young ladies and their families, please, go to the dais? Go right over there, go right over there.
Thank you, girls. I had the pleasure of seeing these girls last spring, when they were just starting out, and they were putting together their first draft of their invention. So it was particularly interesting to be able to see them as they grew their project and amended it to make it the most successful it could be. And I'm going to ask one of the girls to come up, who feels comfortable speaking, and just tell everyone what your project was. I'm really putting you on the spot, but you did such a great job in Atlantic City. I know you could do it.
Go ahead up there. It's interesting that the one who feels most comfortable is the one with the walking boot.
Because I know I could explain it, but I know you will do a better job. Can you give them just in a couple of words to explain to them how you were helping the animals and the energy?
Um, so our project was supposed to help stop light pollution, so it had like a special redirecting mirror, and it was saving nocturnal animals from like being addicted to the light, and it's killing them.
Okay.
So basically, it was a mounting fixture with, with a light and a skirt with a metal, with a metal sheet to reflect the light and a mirror, so it would go down instead of spreading in all different directions.
Did you want to add anything? No. So I have to tell you, girls, that last night, I thought of you, because I opened my front door, and my, my front entrance light was on, and a bird flew into my house. And for the next 10 minutes, I had to open all the doors and try to get the bird out of the house, and the first thing I thought of was the light and you girls. But thank you for putting the time in, and congratulations. I also just want to add that when we were there and we got to witness their presentation, I was really impressed with how they answered the questions, because those judges were no joke. And those questions would have been hard for any adult that was in their, in their position, and they just kept coming back with an answer for everything that they were asked. So it was, you really did a phenomenal job. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion, please, to move recognition?
I'll move it.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Lisa will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Can I just start? I'm going to start at this end. Any discussion? Okay. Okay. Mr. Reed? No? On slide?
So the other thing, I just wanted to commend these young women, is Dr. Hoker said there was questions from a panel, but their composure and their responses was amazing. And let me tell you, it was a bustling area. They had one group of elementaries in the middle school and high school, and it was loud. And in front of them are other schools waiting to go, and parents and people. And then this panel of judges, after they presented, asking really hard questions. And you young ladies did a fabulous job, and I have to say, I love that it's a team of all girls. So great job.
Okay, I just wanted to tell, on behalf of the Board, we're all very, very proud of you. And I, too, like the fact that the three of you are girls. And I, a lot of credit for standing up there in front of those judges, because every time I sit here, I'm terrified. So, great job. Okay, roll call, please.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Forster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few items under superintendent's report. Some of it's just informational, and then I will go into progress towards goals. So I thought this was interesting. We, staff at our central administration was recently cleaning out a closet area and came across a 1930 to 31 registry for the Millbridge School. To this day, the first time I ever heard of Millbridge School in Old Bridge, or Madison Township at the time. And it was a really rich document that was some of the historic names from our community and the children, their names, their attendance, their grades. But, you know, as something from 1930, 31, it was getting discolored and worn, so I was concerned about what to do with it, to make sure that it was preserved. I contacted the Thomas Warren Museum, and tonight at their meeting, they're entering it in as an official artifact from Old Bridge. And I was talking to Jeff Kagan, who sits on their Board, and we're expanding opportunities for our students to go over there and see these wonderful artifacts that they have there and the rich history of Madison Township and Old Bridge Township. But one of the things I was able to do is they, they actually have a, I guess if you're a member, you can go on and see the artifacts live from your smartphone or your computer, so you can see, and that was already being entered into it. So amazing artifact, and talks about some of, again, some of the families that founded this community, and how often their children were absent and attendant, and talks about, and it actually came from the state. So the state sent this registry out that every classroom teacher had to fill out every, every year. Obviously, much less, much less schools in New Jersey at the time. So I encourage you all to stop by the Thomas Warren Museum or log in to see these artifacts. I want to recognize also the Old Bridge PTA President's Council. They just did their Thanksgiving drive, and I know this Thanksgiving, they're going to take care of full dinner and all the trimmings for 73 families from Old Bridge. That's a huge number, I'm saying 73 families, from a volunteer group getting those kind of donations. They reached out to our principals, looking for families that needed, that felt, fell in that need, and they were all willing to accept this food in difficult times. They're also going to get a Walmart gift card to help them throughout the holidays. So all 73 families will get that as well. Truly, truly inspirational. The calendar for the Board was something that was on the Board for tonight. There was a miscommunication about it. Last time the Board had discussed it, it was going back to instructional council, it did that. They came away with a recommendation that I support as well. The wrong recommendation was posted earlier, that's why it was pulled down, and we'll have a time for the Board to review the correct recommendation and take action on it at the Action Meeting in December. So it'll be, I know people are looking for it, but it'll be approved at the December Action Meeting. I also want to acknowledge the date of another event that's coming up. The Mayor is having, in partnership with the Municipal Alliance and our school district, on Monday, November 25th, their Hidden in Plain Sight event at the Ellen McDermott Center at 6:30 PM. This is one of our battles against the opioid epidemic that still rages on in our community, and, you know, even as of this past month, we've had families impacted by the deaths of overdose. And so we still have a big fight that we have to wage. The state has caught up to us in our aggressiveness to battle this, and actually passed legislation that every school district must put together a educational program for parents. And they must put this together and have parents come to it over several nights that 'll make it available in a location within a school, within a school district, so it's convenient for parents. So we do that, as historically, this is our third year doing that. It's going to be over Tuesday nights, Wednesday nights. This first event will count towards it with the Mayor's Office on, again, November 25th in the Ellen McDermott Grade 9 Center at 6:30 PM. There will not be a, I don't believe there's going to be a December event, just too busy with everyone, the holidays. It's going to be a January event, a February event, and a March event, and then more will be added as we need them. But as parents know, if you have an eighth grader graduating, you must attend one of these events. If you have attended an event in prior years because you were a previous eighth grader, then you do not have to attend any further events. I do want to ask at this time our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Hoker, to discuss the Giving Back Jubilee and how we're going to hopefully change the lives of military servicemen and women who are suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder as they return from the battlefield.
Thank you. Every year, we gather together with our staff at the Give Back Jubilee, and it's always the day before Thanksgiving, we come together, one of our local restaurants hosts the event, we get together outside of the work just to spend some good time, be thankful for one another. The only thing that we ask staff is to contribute to the foundation that we're supporting that year. We've supported the local food bank, the animal shelter, the women's shelter, we've raised funds for the hurricane victims, and this year, we are supporting the Unbroken Warriors. Their goal is for American War veterans to manage their PTSD symptoms and to regain control of their lives without the financial and bureaucratic burden. This organization puts together and helps the veterans to get treatment that's needed, the support that's needed to regain control of their lives, and we want to support them. There's a link that will be sent out to our staff members tomorrow, and there's a link on the website for the Unbroken Warriors. So it's www.unbrokenwarriors.org. You can go there, and there's a link for Old Bridge to contribute. So anyone who can't attend the Jubilee is welcome to go ahead and, and make a donation there as well, if they want to support that cause.
Can you hold up so the camera can pick it up? Maybe they close in on the founder and his dog, Emery, on the front cover?
Are you on there?
Yeah, that's the best picture, I think. You can close in on that. I've met him several times, and each time, I learn more about him and the importance of these service animals and the lives of giving independence back to military men and women who suffer from PTSD. One of the things, stories he tells me about is since being at war and coming home, he could not sleep at night. He would have such horrific nightmares of the events that he witnessed and took part in, that he could never sleep, and that obviously created more depression and more anxiety that he couldn't maintain a normal life. Enter Emery, a dog that was slated for death in a, in a kill shelter in South, Southern United States, who was rescued by the agency and made to be his service dog. And Emery's job, amongst other things that people with PTSD suffer from, is to sleep next to him. Sleeps with him every night, and she's trained that when he starts giving off signs that he's having a nightmare, she wakes him up. So he knows that he can go to sleep every night. That was his greatest stress. I didn't want to sleep, because when I slept, I had had these reoccurring nightmares. So now he sleeps every night, knowing that if a nightmare begins, he's going to be woken up out of it. Emery also helps him because of the PTSD, he cannot have close talkers. I know, I wish I had one of those dogs, too, sometimes, for that. But close talkers create, give him great anxiety and stress. So when someone comes up to approach him, Emery just puts her body between him and the person talking to him, so it gives him that, gives him that safe distance. Really remarkable treat that they can train these service dogs to do. So the event gets nothing back to the district, nothing to any of us. All it does is give ways for people to come together and celebrate with the gifts they do have in life, and hopefully support our warriors as they come home. Thank you for sharing that, and I will now move to part of the progress towards goals.
Can I just ask a quick question about the Municipal Alliance Hidden in Plain Sight? Were the 8th grade parents notified that that counts towards their, you know, maybe a real time, or?
The information did go home to those, to those parents from the middle schools, from what I understand. It was put on social media today, and it was shared with them, from what I understand.
Okay, thank you.
So the progress towards goals, one of the things that we always, we do as a school district, and every school district in the United States, especially since we've witnessed such events that took place in California last week, is that we have an ongoing concentration on providing the best, securest possible school environment for our children to learn in and our staff to work in. And it's a concern every day, and each day it evolves, and you learn new things, and you look at different research and different methodologies to make sure that your schools are a safe environment from whatever real and unknown threats are out there. One of the things that we've really taken apart in learning more about is the reunification process, something that most people don't have to think about, and it's even difficult for me, as administrator, to think about planning for something, an event that you hope you never have to use, and in all likelihood, would never use. So the reunification is whenever any time a tragic event happens in a school, doesn't have to be a violent event, it could be a tornado, it could be a natural disaster or something of that nature, where students have to be relocated and dismissed differently than they would from a normal dismissal environment. And what parents have to do, I know when there was a bomb threat a few years back at Salk School, all the parents, when we had to do a relocation of the students, all the parents wanted to rush to the new site, because they thought that was in the best interest of their children. We understand that, as first responders are working to protect children in those delicate situations, when parents start showing up, which is your maternal and paternal instinct to do, you're distracting those first responders from their primary function of protecting everyone. So this is a great video that has been shared with the public, it's on our district website. I'm encouraging all parents to watch it. I know not everybody's going to remember if and when, God forbid, we ever have to use something like this, but I'm going to share it with the public tonight, our Board tonight. If we could post it up there and have everyone view it, I know a viewing audience from home can watch as well, and then we'll just have a few talking points afterwards. Thank you.
A school emergency can take many forms and may be due to weather, a power outage, hazardous materials, or a crisis at or near the school. Circumstances may occur that require parents to pick up their children in a formalized, controlled release. This is called reunification. Because a controlled release is not a typical end-of-school-day event, a reunification may occur at a different location than your child's school. What part do you play as a parent or guardian? The role you play might be different than what you expect. In this seven-minute video, we will tell you why it's important to stay home and not attempt to come to the school, how you can stay informed about the situation, how you can be ready for reunification with your child. In a school emergency situation such as a tornado, fire, or crisis at or near the school, the most important contribution you could make to your child's safety is to stay We know your natural instinct as a parent or guardian is to come to school to protect your child, but by doing so, you may endanger yourself or your child. The school district and our first responders are working to control the situation and protect your children. Please, don't come to the school. If you do, law enforcement or school officials might be distracted from the important task of keeping your child safe and managing the crisis and handling the emergency situation. You can help by staying home. In a school emergency situation, we want you to stay informed. We will provide information as soon as possible, but in some situations, accurate information takes time to verify and share. The school district will communicate throughout the emergency, and parents may be notified in a number of ways. The school may use its phone autodialer or text message system, or may contact you by email. The district website and local news media may also provide reunification information. It's extremely important that the school has your current phone numbers and email addresses. If your contact information changes, please notify your school. In some cases, students may be asked to send a text message to their parent or guardian. A reunification text message from a student may look something like this. "The school has closed. Please pick me up at 3:25 at the main entrance. Bring your ID." You should not call or text a student's cellphone, as you may put the student at risk by doing so. Students and staff are taught to stay out of sight and be quiet. A phone ringing or vibrating could alert an intruder, someone is close by. Additionally, please, don't call the school, as you will be taking school staff away from the emergency situation. Ways you can monitor the situation include checking the district website and checking local news media. How can you help? Keep your phone charged and close by. Stay informed by monitoring the district website and local news media. Here's what you can do to be ready and what to expect. In the case reunification is necessary, you'll be informed of where and when to pick up your child and what you need to bring. Parents and guardians will come to a reunification check-in location. Upon arrival, you will be asked to fill out a reunification card, show your photo ID, and then be reunited with your child. Remember, photo identification will be required at the reunification site.
Okay, I need to see your license.
Be patient. Reunification is a process that protects both the safety of the students and provides for an accountable exchange of custody from the school to a recognized custodial parent or guardian. Our number-one priority is that students are safe and that they are united with their parent or guardian safely. Remember that this process takes time, and it's important to stay calm. What if a parent can't pick up their child? When a parent can't immediately go to the reunification site, the preference is to release students to those individuals who are identified as a student's emergency contact. Student self-evacuation. In some situations, students may evacuate themselves from the school. In this case, the student should notify their parent that they are safe. It is also imperative that the student or the parent notify the district. In this case, we may publicize a special phone number for this purpose. Remember, bring your photo ID. Be patient and remain calm. Try to send one adult rather than bringing other family members. Bring a pen or a pencil. In this video, we have told you why it's important to stay home and not attempt to come to the school, how you can stay informed about the situation, how you can be ready for reunification with your child. How can you help? Help us spread the word. Remind your friends and talk about your own emergency. Remind your friends and talk about your own emergency plans. Keep your information current by letting the school know if your phone numbers or email changes. Remember to stay home, stay informed, and be ready.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. So, none of this, um, process for reunification would be possible without Sergeant Montagna, and Captain Mandola and Officer Patinafer, who's worked with me, and many of my administrators going through a reunification plan, practicing it, um, going through the steps. And for the board that you have in front of you, you have the, a sample of the reunification cards we had made specifically for Old Bridge School District. Uh, and the real cards have a perforated edge to tear off, which is part of the reunification process. So as parents fill out the entire card, it'll go to two runners. One runner will go with the bottom perforated edge to go, um, with the parent to the reunification site. The top of the card will go with the runner to get the student at the, at the reunification, um, holding area and bring them to a reunification room. When the cards come back together, both numbers on top and bottom will meet and match to reassure that we have established that the parent and the child are, should be together. So it sounds like a lot, and it sounds like a lot of overkill, and for a lot of people who've been in education for a long time, I hearken back to September 11th. I was working in Elizabeth at that time. Um, I could see the smoke from the towers, um, outside of our building. And it wasn't long until, it was a different time. No one stopped the doors from opening. People could just, even Elizabeth, people could just walk in the, the front door. And parents are just walking into classrooms, taking kids and taking their neighbors' kids to take them home. Um, I was the, the school disciplinarian at the time, and I asked the principal to lock all the doors because we had no way of knowing where all these kids were going to be when their parents showed up and a neighbor took them home. Um, and we kept everybody outside and kind of did a reunification right there where parents were, uh, giving their children outside after we verified identification. So it was a, a real wake-up call as to when it needed to happen, how it should look. And I'm glad and proud to say that we have a process in place that I pray and hope that we'll never have to use. But you can be rest assured that it has been thought about and planned for, in case we do. Thank you to the board for, and the public for watching this and listening.
Thank you, Mr. Sididino. Okay, do we have any correspondence?
Can I just say, can I just want something? I know there's a student here from Grissom still, so don't feel like it's rude if you want to leave and go home and go to bed and do homework that maybe you have. Um, we won't not feel hurt if you do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mara. Um, I don't believe we have any, have any special committee reports, but we do have a couple of meetings coming up, so, um, Ms. Ellis Foster.
Thursday. Not that I need it. Uh, Thursday, after curriculum, we have technology this Thursday.
And the meeting starts at seven o'clock at the administration building, and hopefully everybody will show up. Thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, we have curriculum Thursday at seven, and immediately following that is technology. Buildings, grounds, and transportation is December 12th at 7:00 PM, at 7:00 PM in the administration building. Okay. I'm going to open the floor to the hearing of residents on agenda items only. Anybody? Okay, I'll close that portion. Um, we're going to move on to policy. I need a motion, please, to move item one.
DeCaro will move it?
Thank you, Mrs. DeCaro.
Lent will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, curriculum and professional development may have a motion to move item one. Okay. Any discussion on curriculum impression, professional development? Okay, roll call, please.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to finance, may I have a motion, please, to move items one through 11?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second, please.
Lent will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 11 pass.
Okay, uh, we have nothing under non-certificated personnel office, so we're moving on to non-certificated personnel operational. May I have a motion, please, to move items one through three?
I'll move it. DeCaro?
Thank you.
Lent will second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Separating, uh, A, number one, for discussion.
Okay.
Yes, and I would like to, Madam President, I'd like to just, uh, thank Mr. Jerome Brandon for his forty years of commitment and dedication to the district, and I also understood that he is a former student of the Old Bridge Township Board of Ed also.
Wow. Okay.
Okay, discussion. We have, uh, five retirees this evening. Uh, Jerome Brandon, I remember when he was hired back in the seventies. He did a lot of work for us in the, uh, the shops, moving equipment around. He probably one of the best workers that we ever had, and is going to be very difficult to replace. We also have another, uh, retirement, June Charlop. Uh, she's a para-professional. She had fifteen years in. Uh, Jacqueline Ironman, uh, Carl Sandburg Middle School Science, fifteen years. Uh, Greg Wood, Obridge High School Science, eighteen years, and Vicky Brander. Uh, Carl Sandburg Intervention, twenty-six years. Total of a hundred and fourteen years. I want to wish these people a great, congratulations on all the service that they gave us. As the door, uh, closes, we have a door opening for a lot of new hirees that are coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solakowski. Anybody else?
Jill, I'd like to just say something. Jerome, if you're listening, thank you for everything at Lombardi.
I just want to ditto, Mr. DePrima. You're going to be missed, Jerome. Thank you for your service.
Sorry. Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three pass.
Thank you. Okay, non-certificated personnel other. May I have a motion, please, to move items one through nine?
Reed would, uh, like to do that.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
I will second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed? Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine pass.
Okay, certificated personnel. May I have a motion, please, to move items one through 11?
DeCaro will move it?
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Reed will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Ms. Callie, there is a administrative correction on resolution number four. Pamela, item number, uh, letter E. Uh, the degree in step should reflect BA fifteen, step one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Any other discussion? Well, I would like to say something. Um, in addition to congratulating all the other retirees, I just want to give a little shout-out to Mrs. Broder. She was one of my daughter's fourth grade teachers, and I have to say one of her favorites. So, congratulations and best of luck in the new chapter. Okay, um, roll call, please.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Callie?
I am abstaining on item four A, otherwise, yes.
Resolutions one through 11 pass.
Thank you. Okay. Non-certificated personnel transportation. May I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
Lent will move it?
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
DeCaro will.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Ms., uh, Ms. Callie, I would just like to welcome our new Director of Transportation, Marlene Steele, to the district, replacing Linda Palumbo, who's retiring, and we wish her all the best in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so, um, I too would like to, uh, welcome Marlene Steele to the district and congratulate Linda on her retirement, and again, wish her the best in her new chapter. Um, may I have a roll call, please?
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, Pam.
Thank you. Supplies, equipment, and services, may I have a motion, please, to move items one and two?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second, please?
Lisa will second.
Thank you. Lisa Lent, yeah. Lisa will second. Uh, okay, um, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Okay, transportation. May I have a motion, please, to move items one through nine?
I'll move it.
Did I do that right? I'm sorry, one through six. So sorry.
I'll still do it.
You'll still do it. Thank you, Mr. DePrima! Uh, may I have a second, please?
DeCaro will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one through six pass.
Thank you. Okay, miscellaneous. I need a motion, please, to move items one through four and six through nine, right? Because five's been removed?
Correct.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
DeCaro will move.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Lent will second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lent. Any discussion?
Yes, just a, a minor correction on item number nine. The account numbers, uh, for, uh, beginning with Eisenberg, Aiden, should be eleven triple zero two six two one oh five oh ninety-seven. And that same number will continue for all the, all the individuals up to uh, Roddy, Chris, on the, uh, second, on page, uh, eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lent?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four and six through nine pass.
Okay, uh, Board Secretary and Board Business, may I have a motion, please, to move item number one?
I'll move that one. Thanks. Lent will second?
Thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Ms. Callie, uh, just read item number one. Uh, move the Board of Education, acknowledge the official results of the Board of Education elections. Uh, Teresa Burns, three thousand seven hundred and forty-six votes. Jill R. Callie, three thousand five hundred and twenty-five votes. And Salvatore Giordano, two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight votes. Uh, congratulations to the returning and new board members.
Would it be appropriate to have Mr. Giordano stand up so everybody knows who he is?
He will be joining us in January. Congratulations. Uh, any other discussion?
I'd just like to say congratulations, Jill, Mrs. Callie, for your return, and, uh, I welcome Teresa and Teresa Burns and Mr. Giordano. Look forward to working with you.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Reed?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up the floor to hearing of residents on any school district-related issue. Michelle Legro.
Good afternoon. Uh, I want to start by saying thank you for the follow-up on the tech, uh, meeting. Appreciate all your help. Um, uh, last year, we had a lot of talk about legislative changes that might improve our funding situation, especially in the lame duck session now. Uh, is there any new information on this front that we could, you know, that we've heard of?
I know that, um, correspondence has come from our board president and myself uh, to Senate President Sweeney, asking him for following up on, uh, a private meeting that he had with us. Um, in reference to what seemed to be lame duck, simple items to address, um, I gave like two days after the election to say, you know, where we have to process, and, um, he has not returned my correspondence yet, but I think, uh, this is only my interpretation of yours. I just don't think he understood the question. Because in my reading of it, it was talking about you were looking for a rebalance of S2. And not really, he didn't really address the fact that we weren't really looking for any restructuring of S2. We just wanted that the, um, bank cap be put back to the, um, Old Bridge Board of Education to use, bank cap that expired that we didn't use, and/or allowing some mechanism for, um, the local, uh, di- district and or township to go above the two percent tax levy to an area where, you know, over time, we would get to the fair funding balance that they're looking for us to have, so that we'd be funding it appropriately, uh, internally as a district. That wasn't addressed, his answer to her. That wasn't addressed, his answer to her, and he has not returned to mine, but I made sure in my correspondence to him, I clearly laid out the questions that I had wanted him to answer.
Thank you. And is there anything that employees or the public, oh, I'm sorry?
I actually had a second part to answer that question. I did, as Mr. Sidedino said, I did get a letter that seemed confusing from Senator Sweeney. At first, it was a congratulations letter. I'm not sure, am I the only one? You got one, too. So I don't really think it was necessarily addressed to me regarding our questions and our follow-up to some of the promises, you know, that were made. I have followed up with Mr. Dancer several times. It's been a little difficult getting responses. The last thing he sent me was a proposed agenda for a follow-up meeting, and I asked him to give me some dates for a meeting, but I haven't heard back, so I'm still pounding down doors, just like I said I would.
I was going to say, if there's anything else we or the public could do.
I'm not going to say die.
Yeah, we've made the phone calls, I know a lot of us have, so again, just trying to bring out in the public if there's anything we all could do together to make the situation better, just, you know.
I am planning on reaching out to him again this week.
Okay.
What I mind yous too is that we had, and we can get it for you too, anybody from the public, we had a soundbite we also did when we spoke to them at NGIIT, and they said to us very clearly, "Oh, not a problem. You're in an unintended consequence of the S2 legislation, and we can fix that clearly in the lame duck session." This was like, I would say, less than a week after our initial meeting with Senate President Sweeney. So it was something they obviously had a response to and they're prepared for in the questioning. We were the only party really that was there that they actually gave answers to. They listened to everyone else, but did not give a response to us. They actually gave a response. So if anyone needs a copy of that, so they could be shared with them, to remind them that this is something that you promised us.
Right. And like I said, I know we've been making phone calls to membership. If there's anything that we or the public could do, just, you know, we're all working together. Appreciate it.
And I'd encourage, you know, if you guys want to reach out to me, we'll put together a date or time someplace if we want to share some resources to a phone campaign, a letter campaign, whatever we have, we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
John.
I'm Tim O'Neill, President of the Old Bridge Education Association. First, I want to congratulate the winners in the election and welcome the two new Board of Education members, and wish them luck with the difficult decisions they'll have to make in their new positions. In the past year, administration of the Board of Ed have certainly had to make some difficult choices. They chose to close Cheesecake Elementary School. They considered and rejected a plan to privatize the paraprofessionals, and they chose to make significant reductions to the faculty and staff. Last year, the public was given the reasons for these tough choices at the superintendent's forums, Board of Education meetings, and even in articles in the newspaper. There was a $2 million decrease in state aid, an expected $1.5 million increase in benefit costs, $1.5 million in scheduled salary increases, and a $1.5 million increase in custodial costs. We were told these factors would create a $7 million shortfall. As most of you know, OBA members have been working without a new contract this year. We have also had to make some tough choices about how we would react to working without a new contract yet again. We chose to remain positive. We chose to delay implementing traditional actions such as boycotting free clubs and school events. We chose to continue full participation in the school community, including all that we contribute in our free time. A large part of the reason that we've been so measured in our reaction to working without a new contract is because of the district's financial situation. We wanted to allow some time for the situation to settle and become more clear. Well, this is what we've learned since the spring. The projected $7 million shortfall turned out to be about $1.5 million. The tax levy increase of $2 million canceled out the $2 million decrease in state aid. Benefit costs are actually going down instead of increasing, as is noted in tonight's agenda. Actually, the total cost of benefits is expected to decrease about $800,000 this year instead of the expected $1.5 million increase. There have also been no salary increases because all OBA salaries are frozen until we have a new contract. In fact, the eliminated OBA positions combined with resignations and retirements saved the district approximately $6 million in salary and benefits. The few new hires who have been brought in this year are only costing the district about $1 million because only a handful of the vacated positions are being filled. This means the district is paying $5 million less for the salaries and benefits of OBA members. Even once you consider the $1.5 million increase in custodial costs, the district should have about $3.5 million to do with as they choose. This is all without even taking into account savings from closing or selling Cheesecake or the Nike base, the reductions in spending in supplies, and the eliminated administrative positions. While I'm sure that there are many different opinions about what the Board of Ed should choose to do with the funds made available through the layoffs and insurance premium reductions, those of us who work in the schools hope the board will choose to make the employees who have helped bring so many accolades to this district a priority. We hope the board will choose to take this opportunity to offer the OBA a reasonable package and prevent the negotiations process from continuing and escalating. The next mediation meeting is scheduled for December 5th. If an agreement is not reached in December, this will be the longest that we have gone without a new contract in decades. I'm hopeful we can work together to keep that from happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Any old business? New business? Okay, I have something. I, for everybody else in attendance, I have extra copies. And I put a copy of the letter written by A.J. Silvestri, who is the middle school student who for quite a few years now has led the charge for a campaign to write believe letters. For every believe letter that A.J. turns in to Macy's, Macy's will donate $1. He, also, I believe, the day he delivers, there's one day during the season where Macy's actually doubles that. So for every letter that we turn in, I'm getting a lot of nods from a middle school teacher over there, is $2. I know that the schools are doing them. I just thought I would pass it out to the Board of Education members, and if you could fill it out and hand it back to me. And there's, anybody in the audience, there's letters here, blank letters. It could be your fondest holiday wish, it could be for world peace, it could be for restoration of our reduced funding. Matter of fact, I think everybody should write that and send a copy to Governor Murphy. But anyway, so there it is. If after the meeting anybody wants to come up and fill it out quick, I make sure that A.J. receives it. And that's it, that's all I have. Anybody else?
Yes, I would like to congratulate the girls from Grissom School on their adventure to Atlantic City. I want to thank them very much. We're very honored to have kids like that. Congratulations to the new elected board members. And Ms. Callie, I want to congratulate you. Congratulations to all our new hirees and the people that are retiring, and have a great Thanksgiving.
Anybody else? Okay, well, everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
I cannot. I may, so close, so close. Okay. What do I need?
You need a motion for executive session for personnel, property, and negotiations issues, just for two, quick personnel issues, Nike property update, and a quick OBEA negotiations update.
Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
I will make a motion.
Will second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we will, we will not be back. Happy, except to adjourn, so happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Letters.